...for the first time, so bear with me as I try and follow Director Best's lead. Good evening and welcome to the conference agenda of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders. Lou, take the roll call. Freeholder Duffy, here. James, Lizarra, LaFleur, Laura, Deputy Director Barlet, here. Director Best. Okay, with that, we'll move over to our administrative.
Nice to be Director. We have a presentation, as everyone is well aware, we had the restoration of the Di Mansion, which completed this year, and Passaic County received the 2016 New Jersey Historic Preservation Award in the Department of Environmental Protections Historic Preservation Office. There was a ceremony in Morris Town at the National Historic Park on May 12, 2016. We have representatives of the county there to accept the presentation on behalf of the Board of Chosen Freeholders, and we are going to now officially present that to the board. I know we have our county historian, Ed Smyke, here with us, Andrew Thompson, who is the county project engineer on the project. So, I would ask the two of you, will Michael place? Michael is here. Come on in. Well, why don't you step in?
Now, the reason I want to do that because the front of the Honorable Freeholder Duffy said, "You know, you were there in 1780, and every time I'm here, 1934, it's 1780, but I've decided to trunk you the address." And if you notice a brevity, as we know, the Di Mansion was acquired by Passaic County Park Commission and the agency in charge through funds provided by the Board of Chosen Freeholders and the various Depression-era work agencies to restore the Di Mansion. And it opened, it was restored under the direction of a very famed architect, Charles Edward Mardinius, and is dedicated on the October 1934, the 154th anniversary of General Washington's return to the Di Mansion. As we know, the Di Mansion has gained immortality because it was Washington's headquarters to the October, November 1780. Now, the Freeholder Board deserves really high marks for quite simply keeping the faith over the years and bringing this project to fruition. And this project really moved along with great speed, and we were very fortunate in having selected as the restoration architects John Milner from Chadisford, who developed the plans, and an excellent contractor who used top-grade craftsmen to restore the mansion. And some of the things that were done were quite interesting. For example, the major work categories include structural repairs, stabilization of roof framing, masonry repairs of the east end of the building, roof replacement, masonry pointing with window restoration, flooring restoration. We went through a great deal of effort to get the correct window glass to mimic 18th century glass, and that was obtained from a firm by the name of Benheim in Germany. So, we replaced the mechanical electrical systems, French drains. In other words, what we did, we brought the Di Mansion into the 21st century so it will endure for many, many years. And it only was in pretty good shape. Of course, it needed work from 1934 on. Restoration took place in 1933-34, so it needed a great deal of work. We also were very fortunate in getting support through the New Jersey Historic Trust in an initial grant award of $619,000, and that was matched by the Freeholders. So, the Di Mansion cost $1.4 million to do, and we're also projecting the visitor center at $599,000. But I can't stress enough how gratifying it was for me to work with my colleagues and to work with the Freeholders, and the Freeholders are, of course, power of this, but we happened to have a very, very fine county architect, Andrew Thompson, and worked with him right along with this, and Andrew kept this project moving, and he did it with aplomb, and he did it with a great deal of knowledge, and he deserves a great deal of credit. And then, of course, we had our planning director, who handled the initial grants with the state, and our county engineer, who was, you know, shepherded the project through from the engineering end. And Steve handled a lot of behind-the-scenes details in getting things done, and he did it with his usual wide-ranging expertise for anything regarding engineering. So, the project took a little bit more than a year, and something of this complexity, ladies and gentlemen, I mean, is something to marvel at. For example, in Washington's office, a part of the floor had been, a small section of the floor, had been eaten away by a marman, and the flooring was replaced, that section was replaced by Dutch repair using 18th century woods. The entire center first floor hall, the original woods were identified, and they were saved, and the firm obtained 18th century woods from a place in a salvage, wood salvage place in Pennsylvania, which is renowned for that kind of work. So, again, it was, it's been a great pleasure, and I think that we were vindicated in this investment of tax dollars. We were vindicated by the award granted to the Freeholders and the other participants in the project by the New Jersey Historic Preservation Office, and that's a competitive award, ladies and gentlemen. Many people are nominated for this award, and not that many are chosen. So, that was also a very big plus, and that is something that we can add to the accolades that have accumulated around the history of the Di Mansion, from the time it served as Washington's headquarters and also was placed on the state and national register. And the New Jersey, the Historic Trust for Historic Preservation, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, one by the name of Dupree Bullock, it was the historian, said 40, 50 years ago, that the initial restoration of the Di Mansion was an outstanding one. So, we have many accolades to add to the building, and I want to repeat something. Why? Well, we spent all this taxpayer money, and as the county administrator said, "We want to utilize this building so people can learn. We want to see this as a great educational experiment." And I have to say, Freeholder Best, writing to the President of the United States in the same way that was done in 1934, when Franklin Delano Roosevelt responded, he gave his words of encouragement, Freeholder Best said that the board had embarked upon an extensive restoration, rehabilitation of the stately house, so it will prosper for another century in educating our various visitors, men, women, children, all ethnicities and creeds about the fundamentals of American democracy. And you know, and we've seen events that shock us, terrible things have happened to this country, and we need a place like the Di Mansion, more than ever, to help educate people, what are, what are the ideals of American liberty, and what transpired there in 1780? Yes, it's a house filled with beautiful furniture. Yes, we can learn about Colonel Di, who was inviting General Washington to use his house in 1772, as, I know this because I was there, as Freeholder Duffy said.
Just a young boy.
I was, I was very young then. In fact, I saw General Washington sitting in that office. And, you know, you look at, you look at what transpired there, and why do we fight for it? Well, one of the main reasons is to enjoy the fruits and blessings of democracy that we enjoy today. So, we are very, very hopeful that the site will see a resurgence of interest in not only just cultural values, but the values that are implicit and embodied in our Constitution, the liberties that we enjoy today. Thank you.
Andrew, did you see the, how I was talking? Did you buy the, all right.
Andrew, Michael, if you want to add anything, please feel free, but.
Well, just.
Again, working on this project, and again, thank you on behalf of the Board of Freeholders and New Jersey Historic Trust, what was really rewarding project to work on, the Di Mansion, to restore this from Passaic County, and we hope that, you know, we have a couple of other projects coming up that are in the county of Goffbrook Park and Wiesbroe Park, and we hope to get the same amount of work done there to restore those buildings and, again, give some good nature back to the county.
I'd just like to add that I'm even more proud than ever before to be part of the Passaic County team, because this county and this board has really made a name for itself in terms of leadership in historic preservation. As you know, last year, we received an award for the designation of the courthouse in Courthouse Annex to be placed on the national state register. So, all the other counties are watching, Passaic County's doing it. Obviously, it's for celebrating our culture and history, but also in terms of economic development, to attract visitors to our county. So, it's really an exciting time to be here, and I really am appreciative of the leadership of this board and understanding that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael, and kudos to all of you. And you added so much to the Di Mansion opening, the monograph that you had printed from our former colleague, Freeholder De Yode, and his writing about General Washington's time with the Di Mansion. And please convey back to your entire teams our gratitude for the great work that was done. And I think it's so exciting, as you pointed out, and Director Best wrote to the President, and will now have side-by-side letters, one from President Roosevelt and one from President Obama, talking about the work that the county has done at the Di Mansion and preserving it twice now in the past century. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Freeholder. With the Board of Freeholders, everything actually stops there, as the legislators of the county. And after being, watching so many of our properties slide into problems, it was highly gratifying, as I said in my part, to see this board commit to the slogan that they have adopted, "A rich history and a bright future."
Thank you.
Let's take a quick photo of the board that is presented, Andy's final one, and we'll move on to the rest.
All right. Grant Program Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2016. We have Ms. Deborah Hopkin, Director of our Division of Economic Development, here for us.
Announcement of the public hearing. This public hearing is being held in accordance with the federal regulations, 24 CFR Part 91, and Passaic County's plan for citizen participation. Passaic County has prepared a new annual action plan for fiscal year 2016 for the community development block grant program.
Good afternoon, everyone. Passaic County prepared a Passaic County Community Development Block Grant Program Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2016 in accordance with the objectives of the five-year consolidation plan, which is an effect between fiscal year 2013 and fiscal year 2017. The annual plan covers the program period from September 1, 2016, to August 31, 2017, as a summary of the projects recommended for funding that have been distributed. The objective of this program is to assist low and moderate incomeed residents and individuals with special needs to resume benefit in the county of Passaic. Twelve communities participate in the urban county CDBG program. Louisville, Eldon, North Lawn, Little Falls, North Eldon, Pompton Lakes, Prescott Park, Greenwood, Totoa, Wannacue, West Mill, Frehley, and Ploton Park. Communities of Passaic, Passaic, Clinton, and Wayne receive their own entitlements, grants, and others. In addition, nonprofit agencies providing services to low, moderate-income individuals in the 12 municipalities are also eligible to receive funding. No more than 15% of the grant will be utilized for public services, social activities. In the past five years, projects such as the Second Avenue Sewer project, the Soddy Food Program, and the Wannacue have been funded, renovation of the Einstein Memorial Library in Pompton Lakes, installation of ADA curb ramps, or paving of Ethel Avenue, Student Avenue, and Business Street in Port Mac, and installation of sanitary sewer system, bathroom facilities, and Spray Park in Hospital Park, Prescott Park, just as an example. CDBG funding applications from municipalities and nonprofit organizations are issued in January of each year and are due in March for fiscal year 2016. Applications are due on March 14, 2016. The first public meeting for fiscal year 2016 was held on Saturday, 5th, at Mike and David's Drive, Totoa, New Jersey. Applications are due by the Planning and Development Committee of the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders, Freeholders, on April 6, 2016. And the projects that are included in our proposed action plan for 2016 include Borough Green Dale, $75,000 for the Leary Avenue destruction, Borough of Eldon, Dahlon Avenue, Town Square Park, $100,000, Borough of Fortun, Wigan, and Eighth Avenue, for $50,000, Borough of Pompton Lakes, ADA compliant curb cuts, for $44,560, Borough of Prospect Park, the redevelopment of North Penn Street between Caldon Avenue and Fairfield Avenue, for $100,000, Borough of Totoa, the sanitary sewer lining project phase four, for $100,000, that's a perimeter drive between Rosalie Street and Margaret Street, Borough of Wannacue, for the road reconstruction of Lincoln Avenue, Locust Street, Apple Avenue, and Ocean Street, $75,000, and Borough of Woodland Park, Wilber Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project priority, which is a priority number one, for $50,000 and $7,000. In addition, we've proposed funding for several nonprofit organizations. Apple Family Community Services to operate a project name, $20,000, Big Bridge Services to operate a project sale, $12,135, the Fair Housing Council of New Jersey that provides housing discrimination counseling to Passaic County residents, for $5,000, and County Court-appointed special advocates, HAC CASA, for $10,000. And the total grant this year was $810,869 as per guidance.
Thank you very much. Since this is a public hearing, I want to have on the record who was present here from the Freeholder Board. Lou, could you repeat the roll call? Freeholders Duffy, here. James, Lizarra, LaFleur, Laura, Deputy Director Barlet, here. Director Best.
Here.
So, does anyone present desire to be heard on fiscal year 2016, community development block grant action program? Excuse me, action plan. Is this one, is that my question? So, as a member of the public, just state your name and address, and any comments, and anything you say is a public record.
Erica Kasslinger, I'm the executive director of the Passaic County Court-appointed special advocates, better known as CASA. As of the first year, we are being proposed for receiving funding, I just want to thank the Freeholder Board for considering our application and the proposal. For those who may not be familiar with the program, we serve children who have been abused and abducted by families here in Passaic County and under the jurisdiction of the family court. In the participating 12 municipalities that represents, that are participating in the community block, community development block grant program, we would be serving approximately 12 to 15 children under this grant program, additional over what our current population has served in years prior. Last year, Passaic County CASA served 202 children across the county. Unfortunately, that only represents about 30% of the total population of children in foster care, due to limited funding and limited volunteers that are available. So, we're always trying to increase both funding and volunteer opportunities, and welcome this opportunity. For the Freeholders, this is the first time we've received any county funding, and so we're really excited about the opportunity to increase our partnership, and we appreciate the community support. So, thank you very much, and we will be forward to building our relationship with the county.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else present wishes to be heard regarding the CDBG fiscal year 2016 action plan? Freeholders Duffy, here. James, Lizarra, LaFleur, Laura, Deputy Director Barlet, Deputy Director Best. Do we need a roll call at this moment, or is that done as a part of our regular meeting?
No, the resolution will be considered on June 28, meeting. This is, we're still in the public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to review our reception matters, K1 through K75. Council, any amendments and any late starters?
Yeah, there is one late starter. This director, in close order, has requested the appointment of a search committee at the Passaic County Committee of College, reappointment of one member, and appointment of four new members in the city. I believe that was Mr. Hart, Steve, notified, maybe I have.
So, that will be K76?
Yes.
Is that all?
That's all.
Any need for executive session?
I don't have any.
Okay. Got a motion to adjourn? Any questions?
Not so much questions, but in resolution 31, I just, form of the administrator, could just speak a little bit regarding the shared services with Essex County, as I see that there are some significant savings. Can I say anything that is positive?
Sure, because the, as many people are aware, in 2009, we entered into a shared services agreement for Essex County House, our use, and closed down around 2016. There's been a great agreement between the two counties, saved the taxpayer, both counties a tremendous amount of money. There is a couple of years left under the agreement, but we'll probably extend the agreement. Now, with Essex County, we're going to extend it for 15 years. In return, we are also, when we signed the agreement in 2009, we had a minimum placement, so we were required to pay Essex County for a minimum of you paying, even if they weren't there. We have eliminated that clause in this contract. Each year, the revue rate that we pay Essex County would escalate by 3%, we have reduced that down to 2%, and we will see no increase in 2017, so the 2% increase will not kick in until 2018.
And if I recall correctly, I think we were paying, by virtue of that minimum level, we were actually paying for more kids.
Correct.
Maybe less than were actually there.
Correct.
Because we were.
We are, we are now just about where we could be, but even still paying for more than we currently do. So, this will eliminate that, and again, it's going to be in the, then for the new house there, graduating more kids than we ever have, and we have less kids to pay than we ever have. So, it really is. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone ready to send a hand up? Alan, entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, Chief Freeholder James, second Chief Freeholder Duffy, vote on. Freeholders Duffy, here. James, Lizarra, LaFleur, Laura, Deputy Director Barlet, Deputy Director Best.
Yes.
Director.
For the members of the public, just to acknowledge that we can't officially start until 6:00 PM, so we have to wait until 6 o'clock on adopt, and then we'll begin our conference agenda, the regular agenda. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to our Passaic County Regular Board Meeting for June 14, 2016. We're going to start with the reading of our open public meetings law.
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of open public meetings law is not satisfied with respect to this being specified in the time, date, location, community, and the notice adopted reorganization, the file of the county clerk post administration bill and mail, including newspapers according to the provisions of the law.
It took one breath. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, here. James, Lizarra, LaFleur, Laura, Deputy Director Best, Deputy Director Barlet, Deputy Director Best.
Here. I'm going to ask that everyone.
You don't have to make me that happy.
I ask that everyone please rise for our indication, flag, salute, and special mention. Freeholder Board.
Let's hear it again. We give you thanks that once again you become the captain of the business of the county of Passaic. We ask that you would guide us, and give us insight and wisdom, and make decisions in order to, and first and foremost, honor you, and always keep in mind best interest of all residents in this great county. We also ask that, as many of us, given these events that occurred in recent days, collectively and individually, we may continue in our prayers, sharing compassion and empathy with the lives that God showed. We may show love and passion to one another, always working together towards. that God showed, and we may show love, compassion to one another, always working together towards a better society, greater community, and more... In your name we pray.
Amen.
My pledge is to die of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask everyone, please remain standing for a special moment's silence for all of the brave men and women serving our great country, and also for the victims and families of the tragic shooting in Orlando, Florida. Now, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 14, 2016. Moved by Freeholder Report, second by Freeholder Duffy. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. Entertain a motion to approve proclamations. Moved by Freeholder Bartlet, second by Freeholder Duffy. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. And are there any Freeholder Reports?
Director, just want to report that Deputy Director Lyons met with Brett Swire for that communication system of the Passaic Department, Department of Security situation. I just want to publicly thank Dr. Rose from Passaic Community College, who provided space up by the Public Safety Academy, according to trailer, which will have articulating antenna mounted, temporarily placed, clip lines, which will actually serve Passaic County better than it would have had it been on a trailer. They'll pick out the township of Wayne, Norwood, the hospital, some other, Willow, Woodland Park. So, it's a win-win. Map that will be to be done. Power involvement from the county level is, you just have to dig the trench to bring the electric from the building to where the trailer is on the clip line. So, just waiting for the final course proposal on that, and the final plan, so that we can bring it to the Freeholder Board and to the board at the board college. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Freeholder Report, I want to thank you for your leadership in this area, as well as Freeholder Duffy, serves our committee, our Director of Emergency Management, Bob Lyons, and of course, our Sheriff, Richard Burdenick. They made this proposal to us several months back, and on first take, it seemed like a good idea. However, there are some details that needed to be worked out, and I think that this solution works out much better than the original proposal. So, even though it took a couple of months to get done, we're now able to incorporate other municipalities in the county, save some money, and it's also cost savings as well for the city of Patterson, who's proposing this particular initiative. So, thank you so much.
Director, just want to add, one speaking point that whole situation that you recall was that the federal government is only going to pay for the mechanism for three years, and after that, it was kind of unclear as to who's going to pick it up. Mr. Sclera had indicated that the federal government will now bear the cost of keeping the temporary trailer up at the Public Safety Academy until such time that the permanent facility is found, whether it's at that location or somewhere nearby. So, again, I'm very happy to report that taxpayers of the state county will reap tremendous amount of benefit from, especially the Passaic Department, from the communication system at next to nothing in terms of costs, which is all it's...
Yeah. Thanks again, Freeholder. Freeholder James.
Yes, just want to make an announcement. We're having a memorial service next Wednesday night at six o'clock at the Public Safety Academy, Old Road in Wayne. We ask everybody to be there. It's a memorial service for those who lost their lives this Sunday in Orlando, Florida. If anybody can make it there, we're going to have a dignified service. We think that it's worth trying to honor the people that lost their lives that day in that attack in Orlando. Six o'clock, twenty-second, Wednesday, the twenty-second, Public Safety Academy, Old Road in Wayne.
Thank you, Freeholder James. Freeholder Bartlet?
Director, just want to say, clueless to you and everyone else who was part of today's kickoff of Tuesdays in the park, I mean, I only recognized Flag Day today in Cordova Plaza, but also started a summer program of jazz and fresh organic vegetables from City Green, and a lot of outreach from our various county offices. It's going to be a great destination for folks every Tuesday from the house on in Acton, and excellent work to all who took part in that. I want to congratulate our colleague, Freeholder Laura. I'm not sure if ordination is the correct term, but I know you were recognized, and Rose is the minister in your church about a week and a half ago. I would congratulate you. Thank you.
You know, James, one more thing. Apparently, we're being streamed live, and I think it's that camera, so I just got a text from a constituent. We'll just give a wave, because we asked everybody to wave down, so, see? It does actually work if we do stream live.
And thanks for, Patrick, for setting that up. Good job, Patrick. Freeholder Lazar? You have nothing? Okay, great. In that case, we'll move on to communication and entertain a motion to approve our communication. Moved by Freeholder James, second by Freeholder Duffy. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. At this time, entertain a motion to open the public portion of the meeting. Moved by Freeholder LaBour, second by Freeholder Bartlet. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. At this time, I ask anyone from the public wishing to be heard to please approach the podium. You have three minutes, and we ask for your name, address for the public record.
My name is Robert Isaiah. My address is 128 Ward Street in the city of Patterson. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, I want to reiterate something that I said the last time I was here. We are not here, or I am not here, to bash anyone, and I'm not trying to be detrimental or not trying to disrespect anybody on the field, but I must point this out so that you can understand the great gravity of the scenario that we're talking about. Let me begin. The title of my three minutes is proceed problems to address at the Passaic County One-Stop Center. In other words, problems to address regarding the current one-stop-center paradigm, and how to make one-stop centers more responsive to client needs. Proceed problems. Perception of Passaic County residents. That clients' initial one-stop-center perception is shaped by one-stop-center personnel. There is a flawed application of the WIA, the WIB, and the WIWA framework. It appears some one-stop-center personnel are ill-equipped and insensitive to the varying needs of diverse clientele, and are out of touch with their clients' needs. Clients that have taken the initiative to help themselves find one-stop centers particularly useless, often being placed in helpless and unfulfilling training needs. Ignorance of a real-time problem that is dynamically affecting Passaic County residents is a potential reflection of the Democratic Party. Basis for the current conclusions: An eleven-year relationship with LWD interactions that will be labeled with workforce assault. Real-time empirical data compiled on a daily basis from the Neighborhood Assistance Office. Trial testimony of a recruitment fair held on 5/23, May 23, that had less been the due state results from clients and the alleged employees. Apathetic responses to party initiatives, which reflects a general disenchantment with the current party paradigms. Resolutions. Utilize the public's proposal to change the current one-stop paradigm. Collaborate with and engage the public as a necessary adjunct to resolve the current paradigm. Don't circle the wagons against the public. Do not attempt to resolve the issue internally without utilizing the public's preliminary information. This will lead to a perpetuation of the current paradigm, and will be perceived as damage control, not a resolution. Partner with the public. Do not create an adversarial paradigm with the public. This is non-productive. Conclusions. Do not go into turmoil. Work with the public, not against. Realize this multi-faceted scenario has dynamically affected the public over a period of time. A perception is shaping of the Democratic Party. It has grown used to the black vote. Remember, we are all public servants. However, you guys are getting paid, however, to address the public's issue, and we are the public. We want to make sure that we're dealing with public servants, and not people who are self-servants. Thank you very much for your time and your listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to be heard?
Seeing on the podium, you move the post.
Motion made by Freeholder Duffy, second by Freeholder LaBour. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. Again, I want to thank you, Robert, for coming out to share your concerns with us. The last time you came to our meeting last month, you had a more detailed and longer speech that unfortunately you weren't able to get through fully. We asked you for a copy, if you could still provide us with that copy, so we have a chance to digest it.
Already sent it. It should have been received at every one year. If you didn't, I'll resend it tomorrow.
Okay, excuse me. All right, so in that case, I take it back.
And, when I just... Anything that I say in front of you, there's a hard copy, I'll send it out.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And one final thing, it did take ten seconds. The information, the next information you receive will be a public request for funding in the form of a white paper, and I will make sure you people get it first before anyone in the public.
Thank you.
I owe you that respect.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we will accept a motion to amend the agenda to include item K-76?
Move by Freeholder Duffy, second by Freeholder James. Roll call, please. Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. Entertain a motion to approve items K-1 through K-76 of the consent agenda. Moved by Freeholder James, second by Freeholder Duffy. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar?
I'm going to abstain on number seventy-five.
LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. Your business, entertain a motion to approve personnel. Moved by Freeholder Bartlet, second by Freeholder James. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. Entertain a motion to approve a business. Moved by Freeholder Bartlet, second by Freeholder James. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. Entertain a motion to approve certification of payroll. Moved by Freeholder Bartlet, second by Freeholder James. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. Received departmental records.
Received the file.
Thank you. Is there anything else from my colleagues? Motion made by Freeholder Duffy, second by Freeholder James. Roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazar, LaBour, Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best?
Yes. Thank you all. God bless you. Get home safe.
Take care.
I took long time. I couldn't forget.